All right. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:30, and we will call the meeting of the -- we're a little bit different tonight. City Council's special called meeting to canvass the election. We will call that to order right now, and if you will stand, we'll have a prayer and the pledge. Lord, we come to you tonight with Thanksgiving on our hearts, first for the rain that we've gotten tonight, and we'll take all that you'll give us. We also thank you, Lord, for the people that are part of our city, for our city staff, for the council members. We appreciate what they do and the time that they give and the jobs that they do. I ask, Lord, that you look out for all of our first responders, give them the courage, the discernment that they need in the situations that they find them in as they protect us and our city. I also ask that you protect our military throughout the world. They protect our nation; it is so important, and we just ask that they do what they do so well. We thank you, Lord, for Kim, for the time that she has spent on council. She and her family have always been a blessing to our community, and she has been a blessing to us, to the city staff, to the city, and we just thank you, Lord, for her, for her contributions. We ask, Lord, that you look out, you look over, you watch over our city, our county, our state, and our nation. We need your guidance, Lord; we need your leadership; we need to feel your presence. And I just ask, Lord, that you help each of us be the people that you would have us be as we continue to work and play in our wonderful community. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Before we begin and look at the first resolution that we have, there's a few -- something that I feel like I need to say. And before we consider this resolution, this is an update regarding our recent election. Last city, the city received a valid petition for a recount. The subject of the recount are the election results for the race for the place two council member. The recount will occur this Friday, May 19th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Kerr County Juvenile Probation Department, 3501 Legion Drive. A recount committee will count the votes. Once the committee has completed its work, we will provide more information. For now, we will proceed with the canvas of the election and then swear in Council Member Garcia. We will thankfully still commend Council Member Clarkson and give her the opportunity to make some outgoing comments. However, she will remain a member of this council until her successor is qualified for office. So with that, we will move to item number one, the resolution, and Shelley, if you will read that in for us.
Resolution number -- Resolution number 15-2023, a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the May 6, 2023 Central General Election. And please note that the official results, there was no change from the unofficial results. Council Member Place One, Roman Garcia, received 1,926 votes. Council Member Place One, Van Guerrero, received 1,711 votes. Council Member Place Two, Jeff Harris, received 1,815 votes. Council Member Place Two, Barbara Dool Ferguson, received 1,807 votes. Please note that per Section 212033 of the Texas Election Code, the canvassing authority notes that the results of the election for place two are the subject of a recount. The recount is scheduled to occur on Friday, May 19th, 2023, beginning at 9:00 a.m., Kerr County Juvenile Facility, 3501 Legion Drive, Kerrville, Texas, 78028. You do have a copy of the resolution at your seat, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Shelley. Do we have a motion for item number one?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 15-2023.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you. We will go on to number two, accommodation two, and statements by our outgoing council member, Kim Clarkson. Before we let you talk, Kim, I'm going to say a few words, and then I have asked Mayor Blackburn to come up and say a few words, and then we will let you finish up. Okay. All right. Kim, you have served two terms. A lot of that, even the majority probably, was during COVID. That in itself was a hard time, but balancing full-time work, home, two great boys who are here tonight, baseball games, homework, and the busy schedule of a husband who is a teacher in KISD, and he has his own homework. It wasn't always easy, but we are so appreciative and grateful for all that you have done and all that you have given to council and the city that you grew up in. You spent your kindergarten year in the Doyle School Building, now the Doyle Community Center. You attended Starky Elementary, Hal Peterson Middle School, and graduated from Tybee High School in the now-deceased Tybee -- no longer campus, a piece of land, beautiful piece of land. And then you came back to teach at your alma mater of Starky. You have been an integral part of the Kerrville community, Kim, all your life, and so it was a natural thing, I think, that you serve the community as a council member. And if my prediction is right, there will be a right time in the future for you to serve as mayor. We're going to miss your wonderful insight, your ability to get to the heart of an issue, your desire for what is best for Kerrville. No hidden agendas, no what's in it for me ever. You always did your homework, you were always prepared, and you were always ready to do more than you were asked or expected to do. And I know the staff has completely appreciated your consistent support and respect of all of them. Some good things that were accomplished during your tenure, a housing development, ridgeland, and we should see the first houses going up soon. A bond for a new safety building was approved. A new well was dug and is now producing 7,000 gallons a minute. Plans were approved for the new history center, and a dent was made, not a big one, but a little one, for financing for infrastructure and streets. And these were just a few of the many things that you helped to bring about. So as I have said before, we're not saying goodbye, but instead, we're just saying thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you have done. You have blessed council, staff, and the city, and we are grateful. So. Bill? I thought it was fitting that you served under Bill for three terms, and I thought it was very fitting that we ask him to say a few words.
I have great appreciation for Kim Clarkson. She was my campaign treasurer when I ran for mayor in 2018 and did a great job, and she saw how much fun campaigning is, so she decided to run in 2019. But what the mayor has said, I want to express also the fact that Kerrville is your home. You grew up here, you became a teacher, you married a teacher, you're a parent of these two boys that are with you tonight, your parents here as well. And that gave you just a real good sense of Kerrville and what was happening, what was needed. On the council, since 2019, I appreciate your questions in the council meetings, very good questions, very helpful, and I realize sometimes you knew the answer, but you felt like, I need to ask this question so it's clarified for the citizens and those watching as well. I would also say that you intimidated me at times. When we were in executive sessions and we were dealing with real estate issues, and some of them rather difficult, you just went right to it and figured it out when I was still trying to figure it out. And on complicated financials, I would be counting on my fingers and toes, and you had already figured it out. And then in deals, the deals that the city needs to make for a variety of different things, you recognize that deal, the deal points, and we're ready to move on. I want to compliment you for your patience in council meetings. I saw it over and over. There were times that you were impatient, but there are times when impatience is appropriate. I think also, Kim, I'll just say, you have served well, you've worked hard, and the team accomplished much. Kerrville is a better place for your service, and I count you as a valued and trusted friend. Now, two words about stepping down, and one of these will not directly apply because you'll still be on council. But a year ago in May, when I stepped down as mayor, well, when Judy was sworn in as the new mayor, the city staff member just came over and took my nameplate out of my place and put Judy's in there and handed it to me, kind of like, go sit in the cheap seats now. But so, but maybe some of that. The other thing was, the next morning when I woke up, all of my city emails had been deleted by IT. It was kind of like, you know, don't let the door shut -- it hits you as you walk out. But I felt very honored and appreciated, and it was a great evening, and I applaud you and continue to pray for this council. We got a lot accomplished in the time that you were on the council. And for me, I see being a mayor, being on council, as a combination of frustration and fulfillment. We had a lot of fulfillment in these recent years, and I trust we will in the years ahead. Thank you.
You ready? Go ahead.
Well, some of this is -- I want you to come on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Some of this is -- some of this is going to be take three. My husband is an English teacher, and he is not here tonight, so I want to make it clear that we are still married. He is taking some students to UIL State Competition, so he couldn't be here, but I'm very pleased to have my parents and my kids here waving at me now. You guys have always been my rock. So, my husband was an English -- my husband is an English teacher, so I sought out his advice, and he spoke some profound words to me, which I'll share with you. Start at the beginning, period. Well, knowing that I can be a little bit long-winded, I know that really no one wants me to take this advice, and by the way, he put that in the speech for me. I told him I don't really know where the beginning began, maybe in fact, this was preordained. After all, I was born across the street on the property that City Hall now sits at the old Sid Peterson Memorial Hospital, so that's where I did actually begin. As many of you know or have heard tonight, I am a Kerrvillian, and I made lifelong friendships beginning even before Mrs. Fawcett's first grade class at Starky Elementary. And as you heard, I did graduate a proud Tybee Antler. And then I left home and I went off to conquer the world, and then I learned that the world that I loved, the world that I most wanted to be a part of, was right where I began. I ended up married to a fellow Tybee Antler, and we started our family together, and I have had so many blessings living here that four years ago, I felt it was time for me to give back to this amazing place I call home, and you honored me by entrusting me, electing me to represent you as a member of city council. I am grateful to so many. My list of thanks is long, and what I'll say won't even scratch the surface tonight, even if I don't mention you by name, and I probably won't. Please know that I have appreciated, learned, and grown from your interactions with me during my time on council. To my family, you have offered me unwavering support. You've taken my fears, concerns, and burdens, and you've made them your own when they were too heavy for me to lift. I'm grateful. To my coworkers, you've endured my absences at work and my Wednesday morning council meeting recaps with laughter, love, and full-on support, and I'm grateful. Mayor, new and old, and fellow council members, what a long, strange trip this has been. We've accomplished so much despite some times of great adversity. While we've been through a worldwide pandemic, an unprecedented winter storm, make that two, and a time of public unrest, we successfully secured a new water supply for the city, began the process of constructing a new public safety facility, spent over $10 million on streets and drainage, made great strides in assisting the development of workforce housing, expanding our river trail, and we even tackled short-term rentals. Mayor, thank you for your continued call to kindness, reminders that we should all wag more and bark less. You have faced more unnecessary, inaccurate criticism and outright threats than anyone deserves. You have handled yourself with grace throughout and are an example to us all of kindness and humility. Brenda, your passion and compassion inspire me. Your heart for animals, for those who can't speak for themselves, and your steadfast support for our first responders are an example for us all. Joe, all I can say is thank you. You knew what you were getting into, but thank you for stepping up again for our community. Not only are you the keeper of our history, but you are helping to write our future. You had already served your time as a council member and mayor, but you stepped up once again for the good of our city. And Roman, it's not a secret to anyone here, I'm sure, that we have sparred during meetings, but I can say that I've enjoyed telling you some of my corny jokes that you've laughed at, and we have actually, for all of you, had some good conversations about real issues, and I appreciate that. City staff, you are remarkable. I wish every citizen had the ability to know you and to work with you as I have had over the past four years. You are all so talented, intelligent, kind, creative. If citizens could know one thing, I would tell them this: We could not be in better hands than we are right now with those who are working for our city. EA, you are more than a city manager, you are my friend. Not only have you shared -- not only have we shared important city milestones, but we've also had stories to share of our families both growing with two boys, one of which soon to be in high school for each of us. Appointing you to be my -- or to be our city manager in 2021 was one of my great honors. We are all so very fortunate to have you leading our city. And Mike, you're a rock. While your legal knowledge is great, your heart is far greater. Thank you for the many times that you reminded me, never let them take your joy. While I will no longer be with you at meetings, I want you all to know that I will be cheering for you from the sidelines. And I didn't name all the city staff, but they're the unsung heroes, so will you all stand and just let everyone look at you and clap for you and say what a great job you do for us every day, everyone? And finally, Jeff, thank you for running for office. While you won't be seated tonight, I do want to share some thoughts with you. First, know that I have full faith and confidence and your ability to represent the citizens of Kerrville. This is a great honor, but as you have already learned, you will be faced with many challenges. You may be disliked from time to time by people you don't even know. So in moments when you lose focus, take a walk on the river trail, and you'll be reminded that you are preserving and enhancing our quality of life. Or watch as our public safety building is being constructed, and know that you are helping to empower our first responders and others to do the great work of protecting and caring for our citizens. May you always be guided to meet the needs of all citizens of Kerrville. While there will be many who espouse their opinions, there will, both productively and at times unproductively, there will be many more that you never hear from, that don't have a voice. You represent those citizens, too. May you tell Kerrville's story in an honest, genuine way, with the knowledge that our city employees are ethical and hardworking, and even so, they may make a mistake, and when they do, treat them with grace as you would want to be treated, and I know you will. To all council and staff, do not let voices of anger and words of hate stop the goals we have for the future of our city. Continue to confidently confront falsehoods and words of untruth. For ours is a great story to tell. It's a story of love. It's a story of people living in a beautiful place. It's a story of friends and neighbors helping each other grow and strive to be better. Press forward with our city's 2050 Vision Statement, since that is the vision that citizens want us to move forward with. We will continue to be a vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive community that respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it, that seeks to attract economic growth and development, that provides opportunities for prosperity, personal enrichment, and intellectual growth for all ages, and does so while preserving the small-town charm, heritage, arts, and culture of the community. I love you guys. Thank you.
And now, I would like to -- do this right -- would like to read your accommodation. Okay. When you stand? Here we go. Okay. If you'll stand, please. City of Kerrville Resolution of Accommodation. Whereas Kim Clarkson has served as council member place two for the city of Kerrville since May 2019, and mayor pro tam since November 2020, and has shown sincere concern for the welfare of the citizens of Kerrville. And whereas Kim Clarkson continuously demonstrated an interest in growth and development of the city of Kerrville during her term in office. And whereas we, as members of the city council, wish to express our appreciation to Kim Clarkson for her many contributions during her tenure of office from May 2019 through May 2023. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable services rendered by Kim Clarkson for serving honestly, fairly, and efficiently, and always keeping the best interests of the community in the forefront at all times. This was passed and approved this day, 16 May 2023, and it was signed by all of us. So. And council members, I believe we have some things for her. Yes? So if you'll just have a seat, we'll be right back. Kim, in honor of all the goals that we did at our retreat and the progress we made, this is for you.
This is beautiful. Thank you.
And this is just a little something that you can open when we get home.
This is beautiful. Thank y'all.
It's a time of relaxation now, so enjoy that.
Do you have a corkscrew?
Yeah, not with me.
Okay. We have a box of things.
Oh, things, good.
But one of the neatest things, there are letters and thank yous from city staff.
Oh, wow.
And then this is -- you might want to go ahead and open that.
Oh, and get a bench. Where's it gonna be?
It's to be determined.
To be determined, okay.
To be determined. And that's from friends and supporters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome.
And I have flowers, but I'm gonna put them back in because it's a flower.
Thank y'all so much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Was.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all so much.
All right. We have come to number three on our agenda, statements and oaths given by deputy city secretary Keisha Francina. She will administer the oath of office to Council Member Garcia. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Let me say that again. It will be -- we'll do the oath of office, and it will be administered this evening by our deputy city secretary, Keisha Francina, to Council Member Garcia.
Okay. This language is from the Secretary of State of Texas. This is to affirm that you have not been paid or paid to be in this position.
The anti-bribery statement.
I, Roman Garcia.
I, Roman Garcia.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay.
Offered, promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office or employment.
Or promised any public office or employment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election of which I was elected.
At the election of which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure.
Or as a reward to secure.
Any appointment or confirmation.
Any appointment or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God. That's longer than the oath, y'all.
Okay, and once more. I, Roman Garcia.
I, Roman Garcia.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of Kerrville City Council Member Place One.
Of Kerrville City Council Member Place One.
Of the State of Texas. Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
And the laws of the United States...
And the laws of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God...
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hey, why don't you come up? It's already seven o'clock. Okay, so let's go. It's the Navy, we should look at the Navy certification. All right. In the name and by the authority of the City of Kerrville, Texas, this is to certify, at a general election held May 6, 2023, Roman Garcia was duly elected Kerrville City Councilmember Place One. In testimony whereof, I have herein to sign my name and cause the seal of the City of Kerrville, Texas to be affixed the 16th day of May, 2023. Congratulations. All right. We have come to number five. And at this time, Roman, you have the opportunity to make a couple comments.
Okay. I'll stay here. Gotta bring this down so y'all can see me and I can see y'all. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. Deputy City Secretary, Ms. Francina, thank you for swearing me into office. It is humbling to see so many friendly faces, and it's an honor and a privilege to be with you here tonight. I want to take a moment first to thank each and every one of you. To start, Maya Cruz Baloma and Nico. I couldn't ask for better siblings for most of the time to support me through life, although I'm sure they would appreciate it if I would talk a little bit less about politics or government every now and then. And the youngest actually played a role, a significant role this year in helping me put up all those big four-by-four signs. Before, it was my other brother. But because he was out of town at college, Nico was able to take over. And I'm sure he is excited to help me if I ever run again. I also want to thank my parents, my senior advisor and campaign manager, Mario and Sandra Garcia, in that order, who have put up with me in the good, in the bad, and everything in between. I don't know how you did it, especially with everything that we had to go through during these elections. And I can't imagine the task of being a parent to not just me, but all of the other four of us. And I'm sure that it's presented its own challenges that you may not have expected on the outset, especially with the path of public office that I've decided to take. Yet, your love, your support, and your sacrifice to help me achieve my dreams and visions has never wavered. So I thank you, and I appreciate everything that you've done for me. It was from my parents that I learned that there is nothing more important than honesty, character, integrity, loyalty, family, community, and your faith and trust in God. And in addition to the oath that I just took, I can promise each and every one of you that I will continue to hold on to those principles. I was also taught to never forget where you came from. I'm a fourth-generation Kerrvillian, and I'm honored to have two of those generations represented here tonight, one by my father and then second by my grandmother who's here. Thank you. This community has given me so much, and God has continued to bless me with opportunities to serve in ways that I hadn't imagined. And I am grateful for the friends who have stuck with me through this race and the races before, because this is not a task that one can accomplish on their own. Each of you have contributed so much to my campaign and in turn, to our community. And your prayer and groundwork means the world to me. And I don't know what it is about this election timeframe, but it always seems to just rain or storm, just similarly like today. And yet, every single time, you're still there. If you ever have the desire to run for public office, make sure that you have the support of some amazing people, like those that I'm proud to call my friends and family. This was a success because of you. I get to sit up here because of each and every one of you. Since 2013, no person has ever held the position of Place One for more than one term. But for the first time in almost a decade, we have broken that, and I am honored to be re-elected and continue serving you and the community of my home. Mayor Eichner, Councilmember Hughes, Councilmember Herring. I won't be serving with you much longer, but Councilmember and either Councilmember-elect Harris or Dill Ferguson, Mr. Hoppy and Mr. Hayes. And to all of our wonderful city staff members, I look forward to continue working alongside each and every one of you as we strive to make Kerrville a wonderful place to live, work, play, and worship. Moving forward, I hope we can work towards putting the citizens back on top. I hope we can work towards appreciating the voices of our community members more, finding value in differing opinions, embracing open dialogue and discussion in the public sphere, and respecting the knowledge, skills, and perspectives that we all bring to the table. We may not always agree, we already know that. But that should not hinder us from working with each other in a respectful and professional manner. I love Kerrville. We're a small community, we're tight-knit, everyone knows almost everyone. So let's use that to our benefit. Let's come together and let's address those issues that are facing our community. And as the leaders of the city, our citizens and surrounding communities look to us to set an example and exhibit the best reputation and representation of our community. So let's do it justice, and let's exemplify the highest standards through our actions as the citizens deserve. I am confident that our home here in Kerrville can have a bright future for generations to come. And I am honored that you have given me the privilege to take part in shaping it. I look forward to what these next few years will bring for all of us. So may God bless you all, and thank you.
All right. That ends our evening. And at 7:09, we will adjourn. Thank you. Don't forget the cupcakes. They're in the back.